What do you good now?
Yeah.
Move, do whatever you need to do.
That's what it is.
Alright, uh, Salaam alaikum everybody, welcome back to Ghost Talk, it's your host Mohammed Sharif. I'm here with Thunder and today we have a very special guest, I'm very excited um to interview her, somebody very, somebody that I hold to a very high regard and respect, mashallah, and look up to, um, welcome to Ghost Talk.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Tell me a little bit, I feel like we know each other, but we don't really know each other, you know what I mean? Like on a deeper level, um, like tell us about yourself a little bit, introduce yourself, um, what you do, um, little things like that, and we can jump into it from there, inshallah.
Yeah, well, my name is Nadia Mohammed, I am a council member in the city of St. Louis Park, uh, was elected into that position 2019, um, if I could brag a little bit?
Mm-hmm, absolutely, please, please, that's what we're here for.
That's what it is, that's what it is, okay.
That's what we're here for.
When, when I was elected, I was the youngest elected official, uh, in the state of Minnesota.
Ashallah.
Um, I was the first Somali, first Muslim elected into my position.
Wow.
Um, and yeah, it's been, it's been great, and then off of, besides the council, I do some DEI work, which is the diversity, equity, and inclusion, I'm very active into, in that, um, field, um, yeah.
I don't know what that is. Yeah, what is, can you tell us a little bit more about that?
No, it's the idea that we're all created equally, and that we are, um, regardless of one's status, one's, uh, race, color, gender, creed, whatever, um, that we should be treated the same, right? And so, um, diversity has become a really big thing in the last couple of years, but, um, the diverse, diversity is just like a word, if you're not putting it into, if you're not doing the equity work behind that, right? And so I'm more into the equity work rather than equality, you know what I mean? Well, obviously, we're, we're, we're equal.
Tell us about that, they, I feel like that's something that people fight for equality, but they don't understand the difference between equity and equality, and the importance of creating equity, instead of equality, so can you tell us about that too?
For sure, so like, it's the idea that we're all, um, racing towards a goal, right? And when the race first started, some people were kind of like ahead, and were let go, is it like before anybody else?
They had a head start.
Yeah, head start, that's what it was, that's what it is, a head start, and so, we're trying to figure out how can we close that gap? Um, because somebody's already made their first round, and when you were let go, right? When you were allowed to start, basically, um, and so, that's, that's a, an really important work in our education system, in our, um, healthcare system, and a lot of the systems, but I think, like, I've been active in the educational field, and then now I'm still in the child advocacy por- uh, portion of, um, yeah.
That's amazing, mashallah, um, were you, were you, were you born in Minnesota, are you from Minnesota?
No, I was born in Somalia, um, Makhdechet, that's what it is, yup, yup, I was, I grew up there until I was like, about like nine or whatnot, then went on to Kenya, um, and then, uh, came to America when I was like ten or like eleven, um, and so, then I started like elementary school here, um, yeah.
In Minnesota?
In Minnesota, yeah, I've like lived in St. Louis Park my entire life, specifically St. Louis Park, like, I, I always joke like, my, my family took a plane ride to Somalia, straight to St. Louis Park.
Straight to St. Louis Park.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Do you speak Swahili? You said you were in Kenya.
No. No.
I don't speak Swahili either.
I don't either, we were, yeah, we were put in a, in an academy, like English speaking academy.
There's a lot of those.
Yeah, yeah, and so like, it was like British English too, when we arrived here, it was more like, like we were speaking British English than we were American English, yeah.
Um, my, my younger siblings are there right now, um, some of them came back, they speak Swahili, so.
Yeah, yeah.
They were, they were in Kenya for like four or five years.
I got nothing, I got nothing.
I only know like small things, like, I know how to say I don't have any money.
Oh.
Which is akunabesa.
That's it.
Yeah, because when you, they, when you go through like the airport there, they're gonna haggle you all the time, so I just say akunabesa.
What's, uh, what's jumbo, I know jumbo.
Jumbo is like big, I think, jumbo, I think it's big or great. No.
Maybe.
Two people who don't know Swahili.
Maybe, maybe, we'll get our Swahili speakers up in here, somebody.
I wish my little brother was here, he knows it, mashallah, he's very fluent in it, um, that's amazing, so, what's the, what's the contrast between? I know you grew up in Somalia, you came to St. Louis Park, it's not like you came to like Cedar, where a lot of people come, you know what I mean?
No, no.
So what's the contrast like, what was that experience like?
It was huge, it was huge, I'm not gonna lie to you, the first time I saw a white person was at the airport, when we got to Chicago.
Wow.
Like, I think we were very like sheltered as kids, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, we were very much, uh, like, my family did the best they could, trying to hide us from the war that was happening at the time, you know what I mean? Uh, the Civil War that was from like the nineteen ninety-four, don't quote me on this, I think it was like happening up until like twenty thousand seven, and then kicked off even more and whatnot, and so, um, didn't really have a lot, a lot of interaction outside of people from my immediate family, and so, it was like night and day, honestly, I remember the, um, cub foods smelling like, it was a really weird smell, it was a really weird smell, like, I, I just remember feeling like, like, ah, my god, this is a weird smell now, like, I'll go into Cubs once in a while, and I don't smell it anymore, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, I, yeah, it's just, it was just a whole lot of white folks, um, and back when I came to St. Louis Park, there was not really a lot of Somali families, I could, maybe, even our, our schools probably had maybe two Somali students, you know what I mean? I'll see them once in a while and be like, hey, we were, we were in the struggle together, you know? Yeah, and then now I go back to the high school, I went like, maybe two weeks ago back to the high school, and there was like a bunch of Somali kids, and I'm like, y'all.
You went to St. Louis Park?
Yeah.
I almost went there.
Ah, you know what's funny? People, a lot of people say that.
Yeah, I almost went there. It's a good school, that's why, it's a great school, yeah. Yeah, mashallah.
Mashallah, yeah.
Yeah, that's amazing, um, I think earlier you talked a little bit about, um, when you were, when you were flexing, which is good, we love that, we love that. Um, but you were talking about a lot of firsts, right?
Yes.
And, um, definitely like for, for me and, for me and him, like, and for just Hamza as well, when we started this podcast, like, um, acknowledging that and giving flowers to people that do that, um, is something that we were very interested in, and we wanted to do. Um, being the first to do something is very important, and it's very necessary, um, but a lot of people don't understand what goes into being the first, right? So like, um, and to even like touch on that, you're the first to do those things that you, that you said, first, the youngest to be elected, first Somali first, but what makes that more of an impact is where you come from and, and your background, right? How important is it for you to, to be the first to do things?
I think it, it is super important because somebody has to open the door, right? But once you get in that room, it's very lonely, it's very, you're very much alone in it, um, and, um, you'll, you'll see people who are doing other firsts, right? Like maybe, I've met somewhere along my journey, I met a, a, a girl who was, um, first elected, I think, Hmong, American, um, and she was, she, we had like a similar experience, right? Where even like, she was, I think, at the, at the time, she was like twenty-four or twenty-five, and I remember like walking into like these spaces or these rooms, where it's predominantly white Americans, um, middle-aged, um, like well into like making six figures or whatnot, I'm trying to figure out what I'm gonna do with my life, and I'm supposed to be fighting for people, I'm supposed to be advocating for people, um, and I literally just got my voice the other day, right? Which is like, you know, um, and so, it, it, it's, it's lonely work, it's necessary, yes, but like, it's a really long journey, where you constantly have to prove yourself, um, in those rooms, right? Which I've come to realize, like, I think like, one of the worst, the best things that people can do for you is underestimate you, and you just let that be, right? Um, I stand by that, like seriously, like I'm, I think I spent the first two years of, of my council trying to prove myself, trying to earn my stripes or whatnot, and to people.
Is that exhausting?
It's exhausting, it's exhausting, and so, people will always believe that you don't deserve to be there, or that you, it was a handout, or, um,
Diversity hire?
Diversity hire, you know what I mean? Like, a whole, whole lots of things, you know what I mean? And so, just not wasting your energy trying to like, please everybody, or trying to prove that, they won't see it coming when you actually like, you know, yeah.
I like, um, I'm, I'm, I'm a big fan of being the diversity hire, I don't, I don't, I don't mind that.
I feel like you'd be more of the personality hire.
Honestly, cause I, I mean, I'm, as well as this, I act as well, you know, a lot of people ask me like, um, what if you get casted in a big movie to like literally play yourself? Like as a diver, I said, you think I care about that? Somebody give me a two million dollar contract to be Mohammed Sharif? Shit.
Isn't that what Barqad did?
A lot of Somali people do that, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Why is that, that, and, but also, they, they started out as that, and then now dude is in Blade Runner, he's in sci-fi movies, he's in, you know what I mean?
Yup, yup, you have to start somewhere.
You gotta start somewhere, I take it, shit, I'll do it. That doesn't mean I'll pay, I'll, I don't wanna play like a terrorist, or like a pirate or something, but if somebody says play a Somali kid, speaks Somali, you know, like shit.
Have they ever had?
Yeah. I'll do it fam.
That's what it is, you know?
I speak all dialects.
Every single one of them, what is it, many came in the cow eye? All of it, I would, I mean, I would say a lot of people would do a lot of things for two million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, but also like, I feel like, what I tell people is, my identity has closed so many doors for me, why would I, why would I not accept the door that it is, it opened for me?
It does open for you, right, yeah.
If somebody looks at me, of course, to them, it's coming from a, a place of like, unsurinuma racism, which is like, ooh, Somali kid, we like that, you know?
Yeah.
But for me, it's, it's looking at, ooh, opportunity to do what I love, and get paid.
Ask not what racism does to you, but what it can do for you, that's what it is, that's what it is.
But you gotta also, there's a, there's a line you gotta draw in the sand, and you gotta stand your ground, like, I'm, I'm not gonna play no, no terror, I'm not gonna create bad narratives about my folks.
Yup, yup.
But if I get the chance to do what I love, and get paid to do it.
Right.
If I, it's the same any other profession, if somebody was like, hey, we don't, we're not looking at your, all of these accolades, but we just need a black person to come work at our hospital?
Right.
And be a doctor, shit.
I'll do it.
I'll do it.
Yeah, as long as, as long as you're not like reinforcing those stereotypes, I think everybody will support you in that.
But of course, also it's an opportunity to, to, even for you too, it's an opportunity, when, once you get into those spaces, for you to, to teach these people, hey, this is not what we about to do, there's all these stuff, you know what I mean? And you can, but if there's nobody even in those spaces, you know what I mean? I feel like it's a balance, cause sometimes, yes, like, as Somali people, especially with politics, and I'll say this, like, we fold for black faces in high places, you know what I mean? We'll take Qafq Sawal that just because Qaf Sawal wa, but at the same time, to a certain extent, that is necessary, because if there isn't even anybody in that space, there's a lot of things that, that can go wrong, that are not being said, but those doors are not being opened either, you know what I mean? The first group, first wave of Somali politicians is different than you and, and Umar and, and Zain, you know, I genuinely see like a big difference between the two, but none of us can deny that they were necessary for y'all to, to, to at least get in the door, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, absolutely, it makes it, it makes the idea more thinkable, you know what I mean? Cause like, when you think of an elected official, for anywhere outside of Minnesota, people are, still wouldn't imagine us, right? But in the state of Minnesota, people are like, anybody can run for office, like, I'm seeing all these Hijabis running for office, I'm seeing all the, uh, people of color running for office, I'm seeing Hmong people, Karim, all sorts of people, you know what I mean? And so, yeah, for sure, like, I think it's necessary to have that first, for the second wave to come in and, and, and carry that momentum, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, and it's, it's all about being the first, it's all about opening those doors, so, um, we know, we love to give folks their flowers here on this show, so, Alhamdulillah, congratulations on that, and we, I always tell people, when, when you're, when you're making history, you're not really aware of it, but I'm telling you, like, in thirty years, forty years, when you look back, people gonna be like, wow, like, y'all, y'all really did that, that's insane, so, mashallah, just keep riding that wave, and, and there's so much more firsts to come, inshallah. How did you get into politics? Tell us about that, what, what made you want to become a politician?
It was actually really random, so, I've always, I think, living the life that I have, I've always been very much interested in equity work, like I said earlier, right? It's, it's some, one of my passions, and, um, I was specifically around like child advocacy and children wel- in the child welfare, right? And so, um, when I first was kind of starting out and figuring out, what do, what do I need to do, how do I need to get around and whatnot, and I was still in college, um, there's not really much to do. After you get to college, you know, like, I mean, yes, you go out for dinners, and you go hang out with your friends, but if your, all your friends have like internships, and they got things to do, like, you're quick, very quickly gonna get bored, and a friend of mine at the time was working at the St. Louis Park Police Department, and, uh, she was like, hey Nadia, like, you know, I kept like telling her, like, hey, let's go, let's go do something, you know, and she was like, I'm at work, and I'm like, oh, oh, my god, okay. I'm like, no, no, why, why, you know, and so, I ended up, she ended up dragging me to like a couple of her events, and a couple of things that she was doing at the police department, and I eventually like, I got to sit down with the police chief, and I was like grilling this guy, like, I was like, why do you buy to do this, and why do we not do this, and, you know, what is, what are you talking about? Like, what do you do around like mental health and stuff like that? And so, cause I have, I have a brother who's autistic, he's verbal, but he's, he's, um, he only speaks Somali, right? So to me, like, that was something that was like really important to me, and so the opportunity to sit in front of the police chief, not a lot of people get to do that, you know what I mean? Not at the time that I was doing anyways, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, good luck.
Now everybody's getting it.
Now everybody is like, the police chiefs are everywhere because they know where to be at, you know, they have to be in the community, and so, I was, I was having those conversations, and like, in the span of like four years, I've become more and more involved, and, um, we won a human rights award, um, in, from the, from the city, and that opened a lot more doors, right? All of a sudden, I'm in front of council members, I'm in front of the mayor, um, they're presenting the award, they're having conversations with me, they're coming to my events, right? Or our events, and, um, it just kind of like escalated from there, and, and, uh, my predecessor, who was the, uh, guy who was sitting on the seat before me, was like, we went out for coffee one time, he was like, hey, like, you should, like, you should run for office, and I'm like, and at the time, I was like twenty-two?
Yeah.
Literally about to graduate, and I was like, I'm like, don't you, I'm like, don't you need a college degree for that? I was like, don't you have to be like established, don't you have to be rich for that? Turns out, you didn't need any of it, you do need money, but just like, you know, other people's money to donate, not your own, I mean, it's a good place to start, it to, to kind of like, uh, but, it's not, it's not necessary, you gotta, you know, and so, I thought about it, and I was like, you know, it's not every day that a twenty-two-year-old black Muslim woman gets to be asked to run for office, right? And so, I ran, and I was like, what's the worst thing they can say? They could say no, I'll go cry in the corner, and, wala, I'll go take a vacation in Somalia, and then I'll keep pushing, you know what I mean? So it's gonna be good times, um, and then, that's kind of what got me into it, it was just so random, and the opportunity came up, and I was like, you know, let me just do this, yeah.
That's amazing, I love that, I love that, the root of your, your political journey, which is, this is very, I feel like is very important. I feel like politicians are at the servitude of their constituents, like, so, I've, trust me, I've had a lot of conversations, since I was like probably, growing up in Cedar, since I was like thirteen, fourteen, I've been talking to politicians, and some of them don't understand, broski, you work for me.
Mm-hmm.
You, like, you talking like you don't, I'm your boss right now, come correct, you feel what I'm saying? And like, obviously, there's a level of respect, but, I love that, the root of your, of your political journey is servitude and, and humanity, and, um, you know, equity, building equity and creating equity, and I think that, that's very, very important. Um, do you think that like, your experiences as a kid kind of had an effect on that?
It definitely did, cause I used to live in public housing, um, I used to get a lot of services from the city, I would see like, you know, where, where the inequities would be taking place, right? I would see where, how staff or city staff would treat others, you know, who don't look like, you know, um, themselves, right? Who aren't white Americans, right? And St. Louis Park has this like, this, uh, my English is getting lost on me, what is it like when, um, an image, what is it like, uh, dang? No, I'm, I'm really, I'm serious, my English is gone, what is it? Uh, right, what is it when, um?
Describe it.
Okay, okay, with words, right? What is it when, um, a perception, that's what it is, perception, it's the P words, it really because, it's, we don't know the P words, no.
In Somali, it's perception.
Perception, yes, it's the perception, it's the perception that St. Louis Park has, where we are a white affluent community who want for nothing, you know? And so, when you see the underbelly of the city, where you see people who are in public housing, who earn less than fifteen K a year, right? And they live in St. Louis Park, right? And so, for the first time ever, like, I, I, I think like, that definitely, when I'm advocating for housing, when I'm advocating for, uh, developments that, um, that have like those lower income, um, like, uh, low, truly affordable housing units, basically, um, that's where I'm coming from, like, I'm advocating for the younger me, I'm advocating for the younger generation, for the new families who are coming in, um, and who are, so, who are earning fifteen K, less than thirty K, right? And they're a family of five, seven, who knows, right? So that's kind of the, definitely informed a lot of, um, the decisions that I'm making, yeah.
Um, how do you, what's, in terms of process, cause I feel like a lot of people, a lot of our guests, a lot of people, in general period, don't really understand, um, the day-to-day of what it, what it means, it, like, being a politician is like one of those jobs, where people don't really know what you do, you know what I mean? Um, other than what they see on TV, um, so, what do you think is the bulk of your work, if we can dive into that, like, what is the day-to-day? Reading?
Reading, I know it sounds really boring, but reading, I literally get so much reports about like things, and the thing is, at the local level, is so like, like immediate, and is so like in-your-face stuff, right? So like, I'm an at-large, so that means I just represent the entire city, right? There are council members who are ward, and so like, somebody will, something will be happening in their streets, like, some sidewalk project that's happening, or potholes.
Yeah.
Dang, pothole season gets me every single time.
Why is there so much potholes in Minnesota?
Oh my god!
Do you know, do you have the answer to that?
Well, because we are a cold state, and so like, how, how potholes usually are made is like, you know, it snows, and then it melts into the, into, like, you know, the, 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 the street, and then it cracks it, and that crack even gets bigger because more snow comes, and then it falls, and then it snows, and then it falls, and it snows, that's the process.
So hold on, so you're telling me, in the history of having roads in Minnesota, nobody has thought of a bright idea to fix that?
Well, you fix every year, you fix every year, that's why, there's two seasons.
No, I understand that, that's why we have construction season in winter.
In winter, yeah.
I'm saying, nobody has sat down, this is the problem with modern day, like, wala, this is the problem with modern day, you know, back in the day, like, they used to just invent shit to make life easier, you know what I mean?
There's inventions being made, did you see what Apple made?
Now they're inventing shit to like.
It's a lifestyle now.
Yeah, advancements in technology, uh, we fucked up our priorities as humanity fam, we got shit, we got eyes that can help us ignore the potholes.
Exactly, what do, what do you need?
Lack in, we, the cars are so smart now, they avoid the potholes.
Of course. Get you a Tesla.
Yeah, nobody has ever thought, what can we do, what kind of, they can't make some sort of like cement, or some sort of concrete mixture?
In London, in London, there, there's a way that they do where they have the bricks laid out in a way where, where if it rains, it'll just like drain into the sewer system.
We can't do some shit like that?
Okay, okay, I'm not an engineer.
And also, think of how much money you'll make, you'll make, somebody do that, please, somebody watching this, that's like an engineering major, or like, uh, what, what is it called?
Uh, civil engineers?
Civil engineer, you see, civil engineering, something like that, sit down.
You know, I wanted to be a civil engineer, that's why, how, that's how I knew.
No way?
Yeah.
They, what about if they made like heated roads, is that a thing?
Uh, do you know how expensive that would be? You'd get taxed, taxed out of the city. Dimalaha, you guys heard it from here, y'all heard it from here, we're sending you the bill in St. Louis Park.
No, we spent, we're not gonna get into that.
That's what I'm saying, that's.
We spent trillions on our military, uh, let's put some of that into our roads, Biden, you know what I mean?
Don't let Biden catch you say that.
I love Biden though, we support the presidency of America.
That's what it is.
Yeah, I, I, actually, I fuck with Biden heavy, because I'm not paying my student loans because of that man right now, so shout out Biden.
Didn't it restart again?
No, we leave mobile on, I don't know, like, I don't plan on paying it anyway, because I know eventually, I'm just gonna go back to school, that's what I'm gonna do.
And then just redo it.
My after in school, until they just figure out a way for them to.
Permanently.
I feel like they're close, right? They're close, in, in, like, forgiving student loans.
Right, uh, you'd have to have a majority in the house for something like that to happen, to even consider, I think like the, this, the congresspeople up in the US, up in DC, have to have, come to a consensus, in order to come to consensus, they have to be one party majority, one, well, one party has to have a majority, I meant, yeah.
I feel like I'm, I would, I'm very convincing, don't you think?
Hey, go in front of Republicans, tell them, tell them to pay your.
A lobbyist, right? I'm gonna say, listen fam, what's it to you fam?
What's, what's going on?
No, what's it to you, why are you so invested in our student loans?
You know, you could make real good money off being a lobby.
Yeah, I, I wanted to become a lobbyist, that's one of the things, it's, it's like.
Never too late for it to become a lobbyist.
Of course, yeah, I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna say, listen fam, what you need for me to make this happen?
Who do you need, whose votes do you need?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is, but you know.
The bulk of your work is reading.
Right, like reading materials around like what's going on around the city, and then making decisions off of that, right? Cause you have to make an informed decision, and then, and then, the other stuff is just like those small little stuff where people will be like, my potholes!
Yeah, yeah.
I have, I have a really interesting friend, who lives in my city, and will text every single time about potholes.
Wow.
Every single time, fix my potholes!
He has your number?
Yeah, he's like literally, he's just my friend.
He texts you?
Yeah, he's just, come fix my potholes, any single thing that happens, is, is, yeah, but I, I think that's the bulk of it, it's just like reading those materials, you'd be surprised the amount of like, it's like this fast sometimes, like, some weeks is like a lot.
Highlight, and like.
You gotta do the whole thing, um, and then, and then you make decisions off of that, and then, um, but the, the, the bulk of it is just like that policymaking, like they'll say, uh, can, can truck drivers park in the city or whatnot, you know what I mean? Can, uh, do we need our streets to be at like thirty miles per hour, things like that, you know what I mean? And so you make the laws around it, um, and then, I'd probably say that's probably like a good sixty percent, and then, another thirty percent is probably being in the community, um, so I serve as mayor pro temp, and so that means like when the mayor is out of town, um, I'm, I'm the mayor, I'm Dukla Magala, is it Dukla Magala, Dukla Magala, whatever it is? So like, it's like being, uh, like at these events where.
You're the head honcho.
That's the head honcho.
Yeah.
What's up fam, I'm trying to move to St. Louis Park.
I can get you a city, a, a key to the city, was it?
No way?
I'm kidding. I can get you a open party city. Just a giant key, start handing it off, yeah.
I love those, cause they don't open anything, those keys.
They don't, they don't, didn't Drake, yeah, Drake got one from, from the six, Toronto.
From Toronto?
Yeah, the Toronto mayor handed him a key to the city.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
What does it open, nothing?
Hey. Hopes and dreams, who knows? If it's not opening the door, yeah, I mean, like, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a thing.
So if you work as mayor, what's it called?
Mayor pro temp.
I can't say that.
Yeah.
Pro or?
Pro temp, pro temp.
Pro temp, I can say that, you know, I was a political science major.
No way, I could tell.
Political science and economics.
Oh wow.
You can tell why?
I could tell.
Why?
This is something about like poli sci majors.
Like hyper vibes?
Seri myself, you're like, ah, yo, we'll be having a conversation, all of a sudden, you're talking about politics and see them.
I'm not, I'm not interested in politics, whatever.
No, I mean, it happens, it's just, yeah, it's, it's fun until it's not.
So, speaking of mayor, you are running, is it, it's official, right?
It's official, it's official, it's official, it's out there.
You are, you are running.
Yes.
To become the mayor.
Yes.
Of St. Louis Park, how did that happen?
Ah, this one was straightforward, honestly, uh, the current mayor is stepping away from his, uh, position, he is not seeking a reelection, he's not seeking reelection, and so, as an, already an at-large member representing the city, it seems like, yeah, yeah, to step into that role and whatnot, um, and like I said, I'm serving as mayor pro temp?
Yeah.
It seems like a clear path, so.
That is a, that's a, I feel like that's a good point to put on your campaign, like, hey, low key, I've been doing this job, so like, holla at me, you know?
Come on now, vote for me.
If I was ever like in politics, I would still talk like that, would that give me a lot of trouble?
Uh, it depends, it depends what rooms are in.
Have you seen the mayor of New York?
Yes.
He's kinda like that.
Oh, no, it, no, only, okay, only when the cameras, I feel like only in certain parts of New York, when the cameras are on.
Have you seen that, the mayor of New York?
Yeah.
So he went, there's one where he stands, and then, at the outside, and he's like, oh, man, I see folks already taking care of that, taking advantage of that legalized weed, cause he can smell it, you know? He's like, ya smoking that good stuff, something like that.
That's what, that's what it is, but when he's in certain other parts in New York, definitely, I think code switching is a big part of it, right? So like, obviously, how I would talk to people, certain people, is not how I would talk in other, to other people.
Do you turn it on and off?
Absolutely.
Wow, the only thing that happens is, um, when I was, I'm very idiocy today, I'm sorry, but what do you, have you ever talked on the phone to your mom?
Yes, yes.
And you have to, huh, hello, yes, um, this is, uh, Mohammed Salat.
Yes.
I'm here speaking on behalf of my mother.
My mom, how can I, yes.
Yeah, how can I assist you?
Yes.
You gotta turn it off.
Yes, at nine years old, you're definitely doing that.
That's your job in your, that's your job in your life.
Absolutely, you know what's funny is, I used to work, my first job was at Target, and I used to be the operator, which was the first person you hear when you call Target, and so if you called, from the years of, I wanna say twenty seventeen, up until like twenty eighteen, no, twenty sixteen, up until twenty eighteen, if you called Target, and, yeah, it was me, and I'd be like, hi, you reached Target, this is Nadia speaking, how may I assist you? This is literally how it would be, and what's funny was, I used to work in the fitting room as well, and so when. And so when people put like their clothes on hold, I would be the one holding it and somebody would come be like, hi, I wanna hear, I'm here for Nadia. Like where, I'm like, this is me. They should be like. So it's just be like, I, yeah, so I perfected that, like, that phone voice.
Yeah, I think we have to do the team. Did you press it again, second time? It says recording? Awesome.
Yeah.
That was awesome.
You're pro.
We believe you, we trust you, don't worry. We trust you.
Hey.
Sorry, we're not gonna.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Are you paying them enough?
Very much so. Speaking of which, in order to pay them, I need money. So if y'all know any donors, let me know.
Oh yeah, for sure. We have, how much followers? Two thousand something?
Seven hundred?
We have seven hundred. Don't be putting our business out there. Pick the highest. Three thousand followers. Let's actually put them all together. We add them all up. How much? We have seven hundred subscribers, by the way, we're very. I have never in my life thought that I would be counting, when, how often do we look at that? Not followers, that's. We don't look at it. We upload, oh shit, we got five hundred subscribers, that's nice. We just got monetized on uh, what's it called?
We did?
This is the technical guy, he knows everything. The podcasting, we got monetized, right?
I didn't know that.
Wow, I probably, how can I deposit this?
You're gonna have to remember that.
They're like, no, you have to be concerned about, then we put it into the account. I'm like, ah, I bet. We're gonna have to wait, but Alhamdulillah, I mean, it's nice. Yeah, to make money off of like something you love to do and doesn't doesn't feel like work and doesn't feel like a job.
No.
That's uh, that's really important.
It's amazing.
Um, but back to you becoming, I'm very confident, Insha Allah, you'll be the mayor of St. Louis Park. I'm rooting for you. Um, mayor, I'm gonna save your. Well, I'm gonna be friends with the mayor.
You're already friends with the senator.
A few people. When I saw uh, Amr Fatah had um, my little brother so funny, I saw Amr Fatah had um, had shout out to him at the mall.
Yeah.
And I went, I said hi to him, we were talking, it's like right outside the store, my brother's looking, my little brother, my little sister.
Yeah.
And I come back and they're like, who's that? I was like, oh, this is Amr Fatah, he's a, he's a state, he's a state senator.
Yeah.
And he's like, you know a state senator? You know the coolest people fam?
Sometimes I have an out of body experience, cause I am surrounded by the most amazing group of friends. Mashallah, shout out to them. Um, so those all have a out of body experience. I'm like, dang, this is a smart group right here. Yeah, it is. It is like because Allah, we are doing the Somali success. Uh, there was a Somali excellence is what it is. And like once in a while, like I'll see on my Instagram, all these people who are doing amazing things. You know what I mean? So I'm like, mashallah, that's amazing. Especially shout out to our sisters.
Big shout out to the sisters. Reggae and the ketchup. Including ourselves, we will, we'll catch up to you guys. It's not a competition.
Someday, it is definitely a competition and we're wiping you guys off the map. Oh my god, there's a Star Tribune article about some Muslim girl doing something about in Minnesota every other day.
Only Minnesota, like me and this guy travel a lot. Girls, well, where do you, I work for the New York Times. Oh yeah, I do this.
Okay, I am not a scientist, so like if anybody corrects me, I will fight them. Okay, there was a girl in Finland who I wanna say made a new heart, maybe, maybe something, not a new heart. No, something with a heart.
Like an implant.
Like an implant or something.
Yeah, we'll just go with that.
We'll go with that. She made a new heart is what it was. That's how badass it was. Three D printing too, it could be very much so. I just remember her be, her face being everywhere and I was just like, mashallah. My mom looked at that girl and she said, why can't you be more like her? Exactly what she said.
But yeah, mashallah, shout out, shout out to.
All of them.
Um, shout to Zainab too. She's doing amazing things.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, you guys are, you guys are doing wonderful things, mashallah. Um, what's it gonna take for you to become mayor? What do we have to do? Well, how are we gonna get it? How are we gonna make it happen? Like, what's the challenges? What are the some, cause I feel like when you start a campaign, you realize, okay, these are the kind of loops, the loopholes I gotta jump through.
Right.
Right? So what what's?
That's a really good question.
And also, do you have, is somebody going up against you or is it just?
So.
You right now?
Right now, I'm, I'm what? People probably consider like runner up, like first runner up.
Yeah.
Which just means like, like you are the most plausible candidate to for this position, right? Nobody has uh, announced against me and that's why I'm like campaigning really hard early on to make sure that nobody does end up. Uh, campaigning against me, right? And so um, nobody has announced, Alhamdulillah, they have until like August to announce. And it is a democracy, anybody's more than welcome to.
I might, I might go.
Hey, hey. I just announcing, oh my god, that'd be fun. That'd be a fun summer. I feel like, I feel like a whole, a whole sea there would just show up for you.
Just all of a sudden now you see a bunch of Somalis who live in, who live in St. Louis Park.
Well, Allah, that'd be so fun. Um, but I think one of the things I'm, I am focused on right now is just building a lot of awareness. Around my campaign, right? Um, that people are aware that I am like throwing my hat in the ring and I am running and then fundraising. Campaigns don't go anywhere without fundraising. So even if it's like your Starbucks. Dollar amounts, you know, if you could donate, that'd be amazing, you know what I mean? And so just kind of, I just wanna make sure that. We, yeah, I think that's, 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 that's pretty much all I need.
Just donating and.
Donating.
Pushing the.
Yes, and supporting. What is this Somali say? That's, that's exactly what I need.
Lakin, a lot of people, they say when you speak Somali, you sound like an old man.
Very much so. I, you know, I actually wanted to comment that while you were sitting down. Look, I wanted to say, well, where did you learn to speak Somali? Because you're. You're like, ah, I'm like, oh.
I learned playing cards and and dominoes with old, old Somali guys.
Of course.
Yeah, cause my dad, he works a seater, so I used to just go with him to work and then I just sit at the restaurants, just kick it with some like guys. Listen to them talk about like, like politics and stuff back home and I'm, I feel like I'm a very observant person. I would just sit there and this would be me for eight hours, just kind of, just watching these all heads talk, so. It's cool though. I, being bilingual, I think is, is, is necessary.
Until, until you think they're.
But there's people learning Somali now in Minnesota.
Yes, they're just.
Damn shame. Stop teaching people our language, fam. No, I'm joking.
I mean, like, teach them other parts of our culture.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm saying?
No, I think it's okay. It's good. There's, there's a, there's a story my mom used to tell me where there's this two Somali girls and there's this Adan guy in front of them. At a restaurant and Adan guy, no, it's the other way around. No, it's like, yeah, 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 yeah. And there's Adan guy in front of them. And they're talking shit about Adan. Why is he here, you know? And then he goes in line and he's like.
Allah, I've never heard that phrase.
I, I heard, uh, the, what is the one, uh, that means like grave or whatnot?
Grave?
Yeah, like.
Grave, like danger? It's like a.
No, it's a type of Shah. If you go to Hamdi.
No way.
Am I tripping?
Has a place though that our people are from. It's near Ethiopia.
That I understand, but what I'm saying is there is a tea that is so sweet. Because it's diabetes.
Yo, this is a great question. What is the best Shah spot in Minnesota? And please don't say Hamdi's. No offense to Hamdi's. I love Hamdi's. Shout out, but it's a very like commercial spot.
I grew up on Hamdi's. That's like you growing up on Najib's.
I would say.
Doesn't have the best Shah though.
Yeah, but that's when we talk about like the food.
Yeah.
That's what we're saying.
I would say my, my tea.
Your own tea?
If we're saying that then.
Hey, you got, you got your own.
This guy.
Well, hey, y'all, he's got a kitchen in here.
We would have turned them around.
Right.
We would have turned into a cooking show.
It would have been, it would have, it would have been great.
I make solid chat too. I don't think it's the best.
I feel like that's the first things we learn as Somali folks.
That's true.
Like I, I remember being six and my mom literally telling me, go Shah. And I would, and to this day, my, my shahs, ten out of ten, ten out of ten, that's the one thing I've never forgotten.
What do you put in the hell?
Nutmeg.
Nutmeg. Isn't it weird that we put garlic in our Shah?
Who puts garlic in there?
Cause I remember there's Shah, there's ginger powder and there's garlic powder.
I was about to say, who is we? No, I'm not a big fan of ginger. I don't put ginger in my tea. Yeah.
I like ginger. Have you guys ever had the, the, the milk and the garlic though?
Garlic?
When you're sick, yeah. And then they put garlic in there and then they like, and then that's just.
Get a, get a, get a cough syrup. I don't know, like just get you a nice little.
We got the, the lean, the lean and the habasodo, honey, honey, that's, that's the go-to.
Allah, that mix brings me back.
Speaking, speaking of, right, speaking of. Speaking of things your mom used to force you to eat, do you guys ever like, I feel like we've had distinct experiences.
Yeah.
Your mom, did she ever make? Okay, first of all, I love Alolay. I just don't, I just don't like being cooked anywhere near me.
No, you like Alolay?
If it made right.
Very much so. Uh, but it's true.
It's like an older Somali woman thing.
I stay at those events so that I can like, you know.
So chewy.
That's the best part.
Yeah.
Oh my god.
You didn't know that?
What mamas do you know? I don't know about that. I don't know about that chief, but uh, the Alolay is that. Yeah.
What's this, what's, what else are we?
No oatmeal, oatmeal with olive oil.
Yeah, that's the shit.
Yeah. With olive oil?
It doesn't matter what it is. Mushari, we got, we call it mushari or porridge? There's another one too, there's another word.
Oh no, I.
I forgot.
Yeah.
But there's another word for it, but yeah, that's my shit. Porridge, what else? Ancela?
An- uh, Ancela's good.
I know you don't say La Ha.
No, first of all, uh, Lo has something else, isn't it? Because I feel like that's the most hilarious thing ever. Can you imagine going up to your mom?
Who has the energy in the morning to say something from here? You have to drink some water, brush your teeth.
I love all of our Somali dialects. Do not catch me lacking like that. I love all of our Somali dialects.
But of course, there are people who say La Ha, that's like we're crazy. Ancela, Ancela, are you guys Ethiopian?
But it's true. It's, it's, it's Ancela, it's the, it's softer way to say it, you know what I mean? Sounds like you're trying to fight me.
Watch this, bro. Any breakfast item, it's easy to say.
Yes.
Quick syllables, English, any language, fam, cause you just walk in, can I get some pancakes? You don't understand. Can I get some? Like, that's a lot of energy. That part of your vocal cord is not even awake at that time of the morning.
Allah is, is always interesting. It's always interesting seeing what the other regions in Somalia say with like certain words and whatnot.
What do you call liv- living room? There's a group of people that say Salot.
Oh, hell no.
What is Salo?
Have you guys ever heard of that?
Like a salon?
Can you believe that?
A balcony?
No, you don't say brisit.
What's a brisit?
You say brisit, you understand brisit? You guys know what brisit? There's some, yo, you got some good folks on your team, fam. Locked in for sure.
Absolutely, you know, I'm taking them to every Somali event.
Do you need any more employees? Me and this guy are looking to.
I still don't know what that means. The word.
Brisit just means living room.
Who says brisit?
My, at least my family says brisit.
Wow.
You've never heard brisit?
I've never heard of brisit.
You've never heard brisit?
For the Arab bed, I heard. But I think that might be a specific type of a living room setup, you know, the ones.
For the Arab bed is the nice, I love those too, fam.
The ones on the ground?
Yeah, that's, that's a vibe. You take them, cause as a kid, you can make um, like a fortress thing with them.
Yeah, yeah, you had a good childhood.
Forget your roots. I had, I had an amazing childhood.
That's what it is. Did you go back to my essence?
Bismillah, two thousand.
Why do you say it like that? You were not that old. How old are you? Twenty four?
Twenty three.
Twenty three. Please hush, go ahead.
I have an eight-year-old younger sibling, so you know how that feels, fam. I have an eight-year-old, so he looks at me, oh, there's.
At twenty three?
Yeah, it's all perspective, you know what I mean?
Okay, go on.
As soon as you're able to drive, you old.
Yeah.
That's sixteen.
In the cities, fam. I, I was taking buses and trains. I got my license when it was absolutely necessary.
You know what I never, you know, there's a couple of Minneapolis kids that came to St. Louis Park? And what I never understood was the audacity, I don't think it's audacity. The, how do I say? To ride the city bus. Cause I've just, I've no, I have not ridden the city bus until I was like maybe twenty one, maybe twenty. And I remember at like fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, there'd be some kids literally, who's like fourteen years old, who would take the city bus because like the, you know, their parents couldn't get, come get them. And there's no uh, school bus that goes to Minneapolis. And so she'd be like, yeah, girl, I'm gonna go take the city bus. She would get off the school bus, go, how, and I'm like, what?
I have learned more life lessons on city buses and the metro than anywhere else.
Oh, yeah.
I'm telling you. My, I went to, I went, I graduated from south. We didn't have no school bus. They gave us a city card, a go card.
Heard that.
And they said, find your way to school. So every day, I'm outside fam, freezing my ass off, waiting for the bus. I remember to this day, ev- it's every seven thirty seven, seven forty seven, seven fifty seven, that's when the bus comes. The fucking. Something B fam, twenty B or something like that. And you forget your go card, you gotta ask the guy for a courtesy ride. Anybody that's been on metro knows about courtesy ride. You know, you can go out of bus and say, could I get a courtesy ride?
I didn't know that.
And if, if the person is having a good day, they're like, okay, come on. And they'll let you on the bus.
They could refuse if you're a kid?
No, I've not, I've never been refused. I don't think they refuse. I don't think, you, have you ever seen a bus driver that cares, fam?
Yeah, no, I only used to ride it during college, maybe even for a semester and then. I don't think I should admit this. Metro. You know what's funny is, I, I hope my mom doesn't listen to this because she refused to let me drive to St. Paul, cause I had my license. She refused to allow me to drive to St. Paul, cause I was a horrible driver, still am, there's no point. Um, yeah, and I literally had, I told her, Hoya, like I fainted, I can't do it in the middle of the bus. I said, Hoya, like I'm fainting, I can't. Yeah, she, yeah. I literally hit her with the Iska Hertzka, you remember those girls? And she got worried and I said, Hoya, I'm gonna get kidnapped. You want me to get kidnapped, you know? And so um, I ended up having to drive, only rode the bus for the last semester. I sound like a spoiled, privileged uh, suburb kid, but um, yeah.
It's nice.
I barely rode the city bus.
I was crazy. Remember the day when I took all our camera gear? I took like probably like five thousand dollars worth of camera gear on the city bus. This guy's like, nah, nothing gonna happen to me fam. I'm p- I'm the per- people. I'm the re- my mom, she says, I said, Hoya, white women cross the street when they see me. Cause I'm a, I'm a pretty big black guy, like. In the middle of the night, who the hell's gonna say, let me mess with that guy?
I got, I got my McDonald's stolen one time. I got punked really bad. I remember, I remember it was uptown. You know what's so funny? you know what's so funny no it wasn't I got punked really really bad because and I still laughed to this day
I'm the city bus
this is an uptown do you know the McDonald's uptown okay so the bus comes at that station but I was like I was like I have a good fifteen minutes so I ran to McDonald's got me a McChicken and a strawberry milkshake I remember I walked up I'm like twenty at this point right boom I walked up not uh uh there was a guy who was sitting with his girlfriend and his girlfriend looked at me and she's like that look good I said yeah yeah it does I turned around cuz I'm thinking yeah I'm gonna eat my food he said hey my girlfriend said that looked good I said oh I know I said thank you give it to her she didn't eat all day I said um I said well I mean like with my food I didn't eat all day he said girl you want me to get up I said no I avoided eye contact with them the rest of the time
and she ate your food in the corner Subhanallah that sounds like an episode of Atlanta
I found out I found out she did like uh strawberry milkshake so
she didn't like it
she did that's the day I realized
don't make eye contact with people
I remember I remember all the mother saying why would you fold like that but what did you want me to do nothing you could do
your safety is the priority
no absolutely absolutely not take it here you go thank you so much it was yeah that was the only time
we know this is like therapy we know now the root of why you hate
oh absolutely I was not I was not folding after that I definitely was just I was
I like to say for me though like the city I grew up in a city I grew up in Minneapolis Cedar Riverside like I feel like it gives you a level of grit where like anywhere that you go and anything that you do like like nothing phases you like me and this guy have been a lot of places together everything is just normal to me and but he grew up in the cities too he grew up in Minneapolis so like it's the same thing it's like
I wasn't a suburb kid yet
yeah so everything is like oh yeah this is we went to New York yeah we're like I knew this is like just a bigger Minneapolis ain't shit new here fam you know what I mean so I I and being on the city bus especially like as a fifteen sixteen year old like you learn very quick like you gotta stay ten toes fam people gonna test you people gonna try the best the first thing people say is oh them shoes look nice they look like my size I'm like mm this is not your size when people say those are those those massage that means come up off those shoes
that's literally what he said the guy said the McDonald's look good that was that was the last time and I was just like I was not made for it yeah and then obviously there's also like the the downtown guy uh the 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 unhoused people who are just literally the sweetest thing ever because like there's a guy that used to call every black girl that walks cocoa butter my 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 new beer queen my cocoa butter but I mean like yeah
that and probably being asked for cigarettes I've been asked for cigarettes and a lighter more times than I can count in my life and you gotta hey young blood you gotta square nah man I'm so used to it it's like it gets to where you're disappointed in yourself like damn I gotta buy me a pack of cigarettes just so I can hand it out to these folks every day for a year I was saying no to this homeless guy he was so consistent young blood what's up you got a cigarette today nah oh gee today I ain't got no cigarette man
no no I've yeah like I've I've definitely learned how to mean mug people though like just like you know cuz yeah
you gotta learn that you gotta learn that but now you're gonna be staying in St Louis Park Alhamdulillah I'm about to move out this guy he moved out you gotta you gotta work work your way up you know what I mean you can't stay the the hood is is a good experience but you can't stay there
but I mean some of some some people have to stay though because I mean somebody has to do the work
oh of course
I see a lot of people in like in Cedar who are very active
Cedar's the hood
no I don't think so I don't think so
I think Cedar's a lovely place
no absolutely it's a beautiful community yeah Masha Allah y'all got a whole lot of stuff going on over there
yeah but of course I know what you mean there has to be people that stay in the community and 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 do
I mean
it's important but also if you move out that don't mean like you've lived you live in St Louis Park just drive to
just come like you know
come visit us show love it's not a lie you know but Masha Allah you know um yeah I've I I'm excited for the city of St Louis Park because they're gonna have a very very personable very relatable um obviously like from from our conversation today mayor I think that's I honestly will lie I think that's really important it wasn't recording
no it was almost it was almost time
um our interns today are doing an amazing job but yeah honestly well I think that's really important I think that's very necessary you know that as well uh I I I know a little bit about that just working in that realm and and trying to help out my community there's a lot of people you can't you just can't talk to cuz of their personality and ain't nothing wrong with that but um I think being somebody who's like that is important for for politics and somebody very patient too because uh your constituents are gonna require a lot of you and and they're gonna especially those they're gonna ask a lot of you but um uh being patient is 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 very important um for people um this is something that we do as well um we have a segment on the show called Let's Get Practical where we ask a practical question and in hopes of how helping our guests kind of gauge um how they can get their foot into what you do so wonderfully if they're interested in that and we we like to make it simple we like to make it practical and very attainable so that if somebody's watching this they can be like oh okay these are the steps that I can take to do what you do so if somebody is interested in both the realms that you work in um with the equity work and within politics um what are some practical steps that they can take to jump into that
I think it's something that um people who aren't immigrants do so well which is the networking piece right I think it's just letting people know that you are in interested right so like I would say in my case um coming around to like introduce yourself to me um connecting over our common and shared values um working in campaigns is another big one um I've known a lot of people who started off with working in campaigns and then made their way into their own campaign in their own way right um and then I mean it's just that point of connection and building those networks and utilizing those networks you see what I'm saying it's a really important but being intentional about who you're reaching out to what's the purpose how can you have a meaningful and not a transactional relationship right but a meaningful relationship um out of that right so
I like I like that as well making it intentional but also understanding that um relationships shouldn't be transactional they should be meaningful
oh no
and I think that's really important and Alhamdulillah both doing this podcast we've built a lot of relationships and we've made a lot of friends and it's nice to think about it that way it's not necessarily what can you do for me what can we do together how can we help each other
exactly what it is
and I think that's a beautiful experience I think that's the most human experience is having those connections what about like in terms of equity work is it the same
it's the same I definitely like I think like in even in the equity field like I've gotten a lot of my jobs through like networking and through connections right I've met I will meet somebody like two years ago like I would say my past two jobs with people that I met years ago and who were like who just looked me up and and then literally sent me an email like hey I saw this job you should apply you know what I mean and I still do that to people where I'm like I will meet with them and we'll have coffee and we'll connect and I will send it randomly send a job and I used to be an HR person and I'm that one person that's always just sending jobs to people and I'm like hey like look into this see what you can get with this and whatnot you know what I mean so like again like not going into a relationship thinking that you're gonna get a job out of it gonna get something immediate out of it you know what I mean but it's so so that people can have you in mind when they come up these with these opportunities and things like that so I would say the same thing is just like building that point of connection and letting people know like what are you interested in what are your passions about this is something that's super cringe in the Somali community cuz you know what I mean it's like you don't wanna talk about your passions and your goals and things like that but it's things that you gotta talk about because somebody has to have you in mind for these opportunities you know what I mean
and I think a negative kind of connotation has been connected with putting yourself out there within our community and um it it's because I I would say from what I can from how I feel a lot of people have used networking and connecting with other people to gain transactional relationships and like clout chasing and stuff like that has been associated with it so because of that people then assume oh everybody who's putting themselves out there is doing the same thing um you can't really blame people for that but I think looking at it from how you look at it is very important be intentional make sure that you're not going into relationships for transactional things stuff like that is 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 really important and amazing um Masha Allah thank you for that that's that's great advice honestly I would say that's great advice for everybody in every field is definitely like put yourself out there if you don't ask it's always no and and network get to know some people well Alhamdulillah you know we we're very happy that you came on the show I feel like we had a lot more to talk about um but we would love to have you back on the show um and we um love to you know we're we were already family but now I always tell people this too like now that you're a part of uh like we've interviewed now you're kind of a part of the ghost talk family as well you know what I mean so
you guys have great alums
we've had the pleasure and the privilege of of interviewing a lot of amazing people um and it's it's been fun it's been a pleasure um what uh what we always ask is um where do you see yourself in a year's time if that's a thing that you think about or look at what are some things that that you are looking forward to what are some things that you want to do because goal setting and holding each other accountable is very important as a community and this is kind of a platform that we 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 try to do that with with votes that we have and hopefully we'll have you back in a year's time and and we can see you know what I mean where you are and it's just we'll go on that journey together what what would you say
I I would say like my elections coming up in November right so I would hopefully in a perfect world definitely I could see myself being sworn in already and having been completed what is it June now right six months of my of the job cuz I would have to be sworn in in June and so then um my first six months which is gonna be which is a big deal for any elected official got probably going doing the good work I think what's a personal um it doesn't have to be me necessarily right but one of the things that like really and I know you asked this earlier and I've totally like I blinked because it's just like something that's super sad but if you ever get the opportunity to come visit the St Louis Park City Hall you'll see that as you're coming into the council chambers where the where we conduct business right it's like the people's chambers but like you know council chambers um you'll see right outside of it this pictures of former mayors from the first time the city was incorporated up until like our current mayor right and I kid you not it's white American white white male 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 more white males and then one white woman white male white male white male another white woman and then another white man no no shade to them they've done a great job because St Louis Park was one of the most like not only diverse but also one of the is a good city we have good schooling we have good like houses small but it's cute you see what I'm saying and like to walk into that into those chambers every day knowing that there's never been somebody who looks like me like that's insane not even as a hijabi right as a person of color that's insane to me right and so like by next year all my photo will be up again doesn't have to be I'm being presumptuous right by next year I'm hoping a person's color of person of color their pictures up you know and that picture will be up for another fifty years another hundred years talk about history right and I plan to smile so like that's literally what it is and so like that is something that I'm really looking forward to not just to kind of break that cuz it's a physical reminder of where we've been as a city and where we're gonna go as a city right and so yeah
that is amazing well Insha Allah you know we are a big fan of yours and um we wish the best for you and Insha Allah Allah helps you um you know gain all of that and get all those goals and we'll make Dua for you um and we wish the best for you and um we are looking forward to calling you mayor
thank you thank you so much for having me thank you everyone
so uh thank you guys um for tuning in thank you so much for being on the show
okay wow
that was fun
that was fun